A little bit today, so we're getting started. A little later, 10:45 looks like to me, 10:45 a.m. So I call the meeting of November 8, 2022, of the DuPage County Board to order. And may I please ask, would Mr. Brian Krajewski, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation, please?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to invite Rabbi Mark Rudolph from the congregation Beth Shalom in Naperville to lead us in invocation this morning. Rabbi?
Testing. You can all be seated. This isn't that kind of invocation. What I want to do is share with you some words of a rabbi that I very much respect. I thought it was appropriate for today. His name is Rabbi Mark Angel. And he starts out by quoting from the Book of Genesis, Chapter 12, verses 1 to 4. This is the beginning of Abraham's journey to the land of Canaan. I'll read the verses. Now the Lord said to Avram, "Leave your country, leave from your country, from your family, and from your father's house, to the land that I will show you. And I will make you into a great nation, and I will bless you, and I will make your name great, and you shall be a blessing. And I will bless those who bless you and curse those who curse you. And in you shall all the families of earth be blessed." And Avram went as the Lord has spoken to him. Now Rabbi Angel says, you know, how would Avram, who is 75 years old at this time, take to a message that he should get, pack up and leave and go to a place that he doesn't know at 75? So Rabbi, he imagines this conversation between God and Avram. God, Avram, I want you to leave your country, your family, and your father's house in order to go to a land that I will show you. Avram, I'm 75 years old. Well settled, secure. Why would I want to settle off on a mysterious journey? God, I will make you into a great nation. Avram, meh, I'm happy to be a private person. I don't need to be a great nation. God, I will bless you with wealth. Don't need any more wealth. God, I will make your name great. Forget about it. I'm not interested in fame. God, if you listen to me, all the nations of the world will be blessed through you. Avram, when you promised me a nation, wealth and fame, I wasn't inclined to accept your challenges. However, if my going to the new land will enable me to be a blessing for all humanity, I'm willing to take that responsibility. You see, only after God promised Avram that he would be a blessing for all nations of the world, only then does the Bible state, "And Avram went." Until then, he wasn't ready to move. His mission in life was not to attain wealth or power or fame. It was to impact positively on society as a whole. Once God acknowledged this goal, Avram was prepared to go forward, assume leadership, and change the world for the better. Avram understood that leadership is not to be viewed as a means of obtaining fancy titles or good pay. Leadership is a total commitment. It demands the highest degree of integrity and good judgment. It views the purpose of life as something that transcends the self. Avram set an example for all future leaders and for all responsible human beings. His message continues to be relevant today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rabbi, for that thoughtful message. That concludes our invocation. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Pierce, would you be kind enough to call the roll?
Member Chaplin.
Here.
Member Covert. Member Desart.
Here.
Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia.
Here.
Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. Member Pachalski. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge.
Here.
Member Schworzy. Member Selman. Member Tornatori. And Member Zay.
While we have a quorum, thank you. So onto the Order of Chairman's Report. We have a proclamation here, and as I sort of tee it up, I'd like to invite Member Garcia, if you'd be kind enough to join me up here. Shawna Berman, Linda Kunesh, University of Illinois Extension, DuPage Master Gardener Team Leader. Jamie Vibok, U of I Extension. Deanna Voorjuus, U of I Extension. All of you to the podium. I watched the U of I game on Saturday. I was a little disappointed, but it's had a great season. My nephew plays tackle on that team, number 70. So with that, I am so thrilled to begin our meeting on such a positive note because today we honor the volunteers who make our DuPage Care Center's garden truly such a, it's been such a beautiful success. And our care center recreational therapists, they knew that gardening would help keep residents engaged, and both physically and mentally. And anybody who's, you know, put their hands in the dirt and know that it has a therapeutic value to it, no question about it. So 30 years ago, they developed a gardening program, growing success and enthusiasm within the community each year. Today, Member Paula Deacon-Garcia joins us to honor the Master Gardener Team from the U of I Extension Service and the many, many volunteers donating hundreds of hours to support this award-winning program. After all of the interruptions brought on by the pandemic, gardeners enjoyed a successful growing season in 2022. They were once again able to get out, get their hands in the dirt, experience the benefits of gardening. And so I'm going to read this proclamation, and then I'd like to ask Shawna, Linda, and Member Garcia to say a few words, please. So with that, our proclamation honoring DuPage Care Center garden volunteers. Whereas, as part of its mission, the DuPage Care Center utilizes various therapies to enrich the lives of residents, assisting them to do as much as they can, as well as they can, for as long as they can. And whereas, recreational therapists and staff at the DuPage Care Center developed a gardening program nearly 30 years ago to provide the mental and physical benefits of working outdoors to center residents. And whereas, currently 55 of the care center residents are involved in the gardening program, growing both produce, the flowers of their choice. Flowers are turned into bouquets for residents' rooms and public spaces, and vegetables are enjoyed by the residents, sold to the facility's farmer's market, or donated to a local food pantry. And whereas, the Master Gardener Team from the University of Illinois Extension Service has supplied more than 60 members, donating between 15 to 20 hours a week to support the resident garden and to provide subject matter expertise and education. And whereas, the Master Gardener Program at the DuPage Care Center has won numerous awards and attracted thousands of dollars in grants to support the continued operation of the garden and the many benefits to the center's residents. And whereas, in the past 13 years, Master Gardeners have donated, estimate, estimated 21,440 hours to the DuPage Care Center residents at an estimated value of more than $540,000. So now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the County Board, members of the board, do hereby present this proclamation honoring the volunteers and the Master Gardeners who bring their dedication and expertise, sharing the joy of gardening with our DuPage Care Center residents. So move second. All those in favor say aye. Post nay. The ayes have it enacted this eighth day of November 2022. Thank you so much. Shawna, where's Shawna?
I'm Shawna.
Shawna, here you are.
I'm actually going to be some of the... (applause). Goodness, I wasn't sure what to expect today. It truly is my honor and my pleasure to accept this on behalf of the Master Gardeners. Personally, I've been a Master Gardener at DuPage Care Center since 2009. Quite an incredible place. We have seen phenomenal growth amongst our residents and certainly also amongst our Master Gardeners. As Chairman Cronin said, we have more than 60 Master Gardeners that devote time this year. We've had as many as 80 to 90 in years past. So we're very proud of the work we do. We are thrilled to be able to be such a, we think, a positive influence to the residents. Thank you so much for this honor.
Well, I want to thank all the volunteers that are out there. I had the privilege of being out there when the flowers were being picked out by the residents and the produce, and they got to choose, and it was such a wonderful experience. And I also got to go at the end of the season and see the smiles on the faces with everything they got. And I cannot, I was shocked that they had not been, gotten any kind of recognition over the last few years, or our last, what do we got, 35 years, I think, plus more, I think, right? And for the 55 people that are out there all the time, almost every single day, out there helping the residents, the county cannot say enough, and we thank you so much for all the help with keeping our senior citizens mentally healthy and outside and doing great things for themselves and for others. So thank you so much.
So onto the Order of Chairman's Remark, Chairman's Remarks. I know, of course, that you all think this Tuesday, today, is very important, right? And it is, no question about it. But I invite you to join me right here next Tuesday, next Tuesday, at 11:30 a.m. HHS Committee Chair Renahan, Mayor Rich Beenstra, and I will proudly mark the beginning of 2-1-1 service in DuPage County at a news conference right here in the county boardroom. What could be more exciting than that? As you know, the board allocated $1.6 million from the American Rescue Plan Act to bring 2-1-1 service to DuPage. And starting next Tuesday, it will be officially online. You're all invited again next Tuesday, 11:30 a.m. Right here, join me. I think Member Renahan was going to bring sandwiches. And so, yeah, the event will be streamed live on our webpage, and you can go to the DuPage County YouTube channel as well. So that concludes my report. We move on to the next order of business entitled Public Comment. Public Comment. We do have a few commenters in person, and then I understand there's a couple of folks online. First and foremost, we like to always remind our public commenters that we really welcome your remarks, but we ask that you limit your remarks according to our rules to no more than three minutes in length, and the entire time for our public comment shall not exceed 30 minutes. So with that, first up is Stacy Stout from West Chicago.
Good morning, DuPage County Board. My name is Stacy Stout, and I stand here before you to make a public comment regarding zoning ordinance 22-000054 Stout. This is my property, which I own and I've resided in for the past nine years. I live in the most amazing community. Being raised in Wheaton, only 12 minutes from where I currently live, I had no idea this hidden gem of a neighborhood existed when I discovered it. Everyone that lives there takes pride in its uniqueness. When people come to visit, they constantly remark, "Where did you find this place? I never knew this was here." The uniqueness of our area stems from the animals and the horse barns. The world obviously needs laws, orders, rules, and guidelines, or we would be living in chaos. But we also need variances and flexibility. The entire little area where we live in is a variance in the county. I inherit a request a zoning relief variation to allow one horse on my property. When I purchased my home in 2013, it was advertised on the MLS as, quote, "Almost one acre horse country," end quote. The previous listing in 2006 had my house listed as, quote, "Scenic, nine tenths of an acre," end quote. Nine tenths of an acre equates to 39,204 square feet, which is close to 40,000 square feet, the allotment for a horse. Previously to owning my home, there has been accessory buildings such as sheds and a stable on my property that at one time did house a horse. Many homes are on larger sized lots of 1.5 acres to 2.5 acres, or more, and residents own horses or have at one time, including the properties located directly next door to me, directly behind me, and across the street from me. In DuPage County, there is limited horse property. I feel that this would actually add value to my home and the surrounding houses. Additionally, I circulated a petition and received 10 signatures from neighbors surrounding my house and across from my home that this may affect supporting me. In conclusion, our neighborhood is a rural neighborhood, resided by families who value animals. I know that this allowance would be in line with our community values. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Eric Willoughby from Westmont.
Big day today. I saw Member Zay, you have an I voted sticker. I like it. Good morning. I'd like to start by introducing myself. My name is Eric Willoughby. I'm 16 years old and a junior in high school. And like many of you, for the past couple of months, I and many other young people have been working as hard as we can on various different campaigns. And today is a scary day for us. Today, our county, state, and federal governments will likely experience many changes, hopefully for the better. What's especially scary to me is who's on the ballot for this election. From Herschel Walker in Georgia to Dr. Oz in Pennsylvania, the Republican Party has chosen candidates who are unqualified and incompetent. That's scary enough. But as it turns out, we need not look further than this boardroom to see candidates who are simply put unfit to serve in the office they have chosen to run for. Take Member Greg Hart, who is currently running for County Board Chair. He has repeatedly left his constituency down in District 3 without a voice by consistently being late and absent to board meetings. Another sterling example of this startling phenomenon exists in the form of former Lieutenant Governor Evelyn Sanguinetti, who is running for County Clerk. It is fascinating that somebody running for an office that would control our county's election system would donate money to candidates who refuse to accept the results of a free and fair election. I also find it deeply disturbing that candidates like Carrie Galassi have chosen to run on baseless promises regarding our county's finances and education. The Republican Party clearly thinks that this election is a game or a joke. But let me tell you, this is no joke, and this is not a game. Today, we have a chance to elect candidates like Deb Conroy, Jean Kazemiric, who will move our county government forward. Or you can elect candidates like Greg Hart, Carrie Galassi, and Evelyn Sanguinetti, who will drag us into the past by either abandoning their obligation to democracy or supporting archaic and outdated policies. Finally, I'd like to leave you with some words from President Teddy Roosevelt, because I think we need them. Patriotism means to stand by the country. It does not mean to stand by the president or any other public official, save exactly to the degree in which he himself stands by the country. It is patriotic to support him insofar as he efficiently serves the country. It is unpatriotic not to oppose him to the exact extent that by inefficiency or otherwise he fails in his duty to stand by the country. In either event, it is unpatriotic not to tell the truth. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment from folks that showed up here in person. And I understand we have a couple of online comments as well.
Good morning, board members. First comment is from Karen Rug. The subject is Make Comments at the Meeting. There is nothing in the comment field, so that is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Philip Buchanan. Subject is Gun Safety. Comment reads, "DuPage County Public Comment 102522. Philip Buchanan, Naperville resident. Hello Chairman Cronin, board members, Nick Kotmeyer, staff, and residents. My comments are my own. I support the assault weapons sales ban in DuPage County. We need to strengthen our gun storage laws, reform the FOID card process, and require training related to the sale or possession of a firearm. Naperville has already passed the sales ban earlier this year, and other cities are working on it. I applaud you, Mr. Chairman, and our courageous county board members who support these safety measures. This is what leadership is about. Thank you. Pastor Mark Winter said it best at an earlier Naperville City Council meeting. Naperville is not going to help the next mass shooters. We can do the same thing. Let's not help the next mass shooter. Highland Park City Council earlier unanimously called for state and national bans on semi-automatic weapons and high-capacity ammunition magazines. Let's support these important gun safety measures." That is the end of that comment. The next two comments come from Jerome Zackney, and I will get through as much as I can in three minutes. The first comment is legalization of marijuana in DuPage County. The comment reads, "I have just read the DuPage County notice that the Board of Trustees has approved the sale, distribution, and use of marijuana for adults in unincorporated areas of DuPage County. I live in an unincorporated area of DuPage County, the Northwoods subdivision, and have for the past 30 years. As I understand it, there is still a federal law that prohibits the sale and use of marijuana. I see the county notice advises the distribution places cannot be placed on federal land in neighborhoods near schools. There are three school districts within a few miles of Northwoods, Benjamin DS 25, West Chicago SD 33, and West Chicago HSD 94. If 21-year-olds can buy this product, how long do you think it will take 18-year-olds to get their hands on it? How long before 16-year-olds can get their hands on it? What in the world was the board thinking when they approved this? Some compare marijuana to alcohol. Consumption of alcohol may lead to further consumption of alcohol. Consumption of marijuana has been proven to lead to consumption of more dangerous drugs. There may be medicinal uses of marijuana derivatives. That being the case, it should be sold at drugstores based on a doctor's prescription. Is this what you folks consider a representation of the public interest? This is something that should have been put to public referendum vote. The board may have met the bare minimum requirements for providing notice to the public of their intent to, quote, "hold discussions," end quote, of this issue, but I assure you that this was not adequately or fairly brought to public's attention." That is the end of the first comment. Second comment has a subject, "Recent County Board Notice of Board Intent to Call for Stronger, quote, 'Gun Control,' end quote, measured." Comment reads, "Before pursuing recommendations to the state legislature for more, quote, 'gun control,' end quote, I would like to see the board's definition of, quote, 'assault weapon,' end quote, and of, quote, 'high-capacity,' end quote, magazines. What often begins as a, quote, 'common sense,' end quote, idea often has unintended consequences. Chicago has some of the strongest gun laws in the U.S. It also has the greatest number of murders in the U.S. What has been the state's and the city's answer to Chicago's record number of homicides? Number one, the state has enacted the Illinois Safety Act that eliminates cash bail for criminals, including those charged with second-degree homicide and even kidnapping, and puts more restrictions on police and law-abiding firearm owners than on criminals. It does not protect the public and endangers the public. Number two, Chicago has kept in office a mayor that has defunded and criticized the police, a district attorney that refuses to prosecute criminals, and judges who prefer probation to incarceration when sentencing repeat criminal offenders. Is it the intention of the DuPage County Board to follow the state's example, the city of Chicago's example?" That is the end of that comment. Next two comments are from Dana Monikis, and I will get through as many as I can in three minutes. First subject is Petition for Barn Stout. Comment reads, "My mom's neighbor doesn't have enough land for a horse. She also owns a miniature donkey and horse that my mom and her shared. Since my mom is sick, we gifted the mini-horse and half the donkey to Stacy. She was already issued a violation for building a barn without a permit. It is inhumane to keep three barn animals on less than 40,000 square feet. This is setting a bad precedent. All the neighbors who signed her petition have greater than two acres of land. I believe the Humane Society should chime in on this issue before a final decision is made. I feel bad for the poor animals. Definitely should be a hands-down no." That is the end of that comment. Second comment has a subject of Stout Zoning Hearing. Comment reads, "I already submitted a comment in a previous link. However, Jessica said I could provide links that support my testimony at the hearing. Please see the below links regarding acreage regarding horses. Horses need enough room for grazing and a big enough pasture to run. Also, depending on what horses are fed, if they aren't getting enough grazing, they need additional grain and hay. Please see the below links I found. Based on reading these links, one acre, which Mrs. Stout doesn't have, isn't big enough for one horse." And then there are three links from DPaloRanch.com, SavvyHorseWoman.com, and AmazingHorseFacts.com. And that is the end of that comment. The last comment is from Edgar Powell. Subject is Election Day. The comment reads, "We have this thing where we get older but never wiser. Polls closed, but races not yet called. When the votes are counted in the graveyard shift, all the candidates we've dreaded remain in the race. We should not be left to our own convictions. They come with parties and factions. We end up in gridlock, tale as old as time. We end up dreading, then yelling. One day we'll watch as you're voting, because you got tired of our pleading for the last time. It's us, hi, we're the problem, it's us. At town halls, everybody agrees. We'll stare intently at the polls but never in the mirror. It must be exhausting always voting for the anti-hero. Sometimes it seems that politicians serve with good intentions, and we often give too much grief, actively watching, slowly lurching toward your favorite projects, cut to pieces but never killed. Did you hear out our disapproving comments we disguise as our endorsements like some slick politician? Tale as old as time. We end up dreading, then yelling. One day we'll watch as you're voting, and protests lose all their meaning for the last time. It's us, hi, we're the problem, it's us. At town halls, everybody agrees. We'll stare intently at the polls but never in the mirror. It must be exhausting always voting for the anti-hero. Politicians setting unrealistic expectations. They think our votes are in the bag. Race called, they gather round and listen, and then someone screams out, quote, "They're voting in somebody else," end quote. It's us, hi, we're the problem, it's us. It's us, hi, we're the problem, it's us. It's us, hi, everybody agrees, everybody agrees. It's us, hi, we're the problem, it's us. At town halls, everybody agrees. We'll stare intently at the polls but never in the mirror. It must be exhausting always voting for the anti-hero." That is the end of that comment. That is the end of the submitted comments.
So that concludes our public comment. We move on to the next order of business entitled Consent. And a motion and a second. I will read these items into the record. Consent item 7A, DuPage County Board Regular Meeting, Tuesday, October 25, 2022. 7B, Payment of Claims, 102122 Pay List. 7C, Payment of Claims, 10252022 Pay List. 7D, Payment of Claims, 10282022 Pay List. 7E, Payment of Claims, 10312022 Pay List. 7E, Payment of Claims, 1112022 Pay List. 7G, Payment of Claims, 10242022 Public Works Refunds Pay List. 7H, Consent Item Change Orders to Various Contracts as Specified in the Attached Packet. 7I, Consent Items 2122977, September 2022, Monthly Report of Investment and Deposits. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Chad Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
And Member Tornatori.
Okay, thank you. We move on to the next order of business entitled County Board. Member Ashley Selma.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR 462-22, a resolution appointment of Mark Bitner to the Expanded Board of Review.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Chad Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
And Member Schworzy.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the county board agenda. We move on to the order entitled Finance. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you. I move of approval of FIR 046422, Authorization to Transfer and Proprate 398,680 in Additional Funds from the General Fund to the Stormwater Management Fund for the Windfield Creek Project.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.[1779.83]
Aye.
Aye.
Member Covert. Member DeCiani.
Aye. Aye.
Member Desart. Member Eckoff.
Aye. Aye.
Member DeCiani. Member Garcia.
Aye.
Aye.
Member Eckoff. Member Hart.
Aye. Aye.
Member Garcia. Member Krajewski.
Aye. Aye.
Member Hart. Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Aye.
Member Krajewski. Member Ozog.
Aye. Aye.
Member LaPlante. Member Phillips.
Aye. Aye.
Member Ozog. Member Pachalski.
Aye. Aye.
Member Phillips. Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatory.
Aye.
And member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatory.
Aye.
And member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatory.
Aye.
And member Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 047022, Budget Transfers 118, 2022, Various Companies and Accounting Units.
Been a motion and a second, and want to welcome member Covert. Can we add her to the roll, Mr. Pierce?
Yeah.
Swaitly?
I will.
Been a motion and a second, Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatory.
Aye.
And member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
And member Schworzy.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Aye.
And member Selman.
Aye.
And member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
And member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Aye.
And member Selman.
Aye.
And member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
And member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
And member Schworzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
And member Krajewski.
Aye.
Fourteen, I, three, nay.
There are fourteen voting I, three voting nay, and the resolution is adopted. Okay, thank you. Pays for horses.
Aye.
Very nice. Where are we? Member Chaplin? No, member Tornatory, forgive me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of DCO 6822, Order in Zoning 2255, a zoning hearing officer's recommendation to approve a variation to allow six-foot-one-hundred percent closed privacy fence.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Tornatory.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
And member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
And member Schworzy.
Aye.
And member Selman.
Aye.
And member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
And member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
And member Schworzy.
Aye.
And member Selman.
Aye.
And member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
And member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
And member Schworzy.
Aye.
And member Selman.
Aye.
And member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Thank you, Chairman. As I explained in the Development Committee meeting, I was the one vote against this petitioner. I've been a volunteer at Donata Equestrian for 12 years, and in my opinion, this property is too small for a horse. If it's a horse-friendly property, or I'm sorry, a horse-friendly community, then maybe somebody else could board that horse for her, so she'd be able to enjoy that. But at Donata, we never, ever, ever leave a horse by itself. They are herd animals. They get nervous when left alone. And the petitioner's comment, a public comment, that this property was, I'm sorry, let me go back to it, that it was listed as MLS as a horse country, does not say that that property was suitable for, as a horse property. And I agree with the public comment that it's inhumane to keep a horse on too small of a property.
Further comment, Member Garcia.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Chair Corrigan. In the Development Committee, we did have a lot of neighbors come out and support, and I think her neighborhood is really unique in that I think all the neighbors actually have yards that they could roam around them. They will help each other out, so I think her yard being a little bit smaller is not going to hurt her. I do believe she did say she has a pig and a couple of dogs, and so I do think that they do have some kind of company on there for the horse, so speaking that for the horse. So I will be in favor of this.
Very good. Further discussion, Member Renahan, who has the Hanson Center right in your backyard, and I'm sure it's smaller than one acre over there, some of that.
Yeah, very close, very close. Yeah, my question is an actual question, because I'm not on Development Committee. We had comment about a donkey or something? I mean, is it one animal on the property? I'm just trying to figure this out.
Yeah, good companion.
Isn't there like a gift of a borough, or?
Further discussion, Member Pachowski filed by Member Kuduski.
I'm not on the committee, but if the zoning hearing officer gets it wrong, I always rely on the Development Committee, and they passed this five to one, so I will be supporting this, because I think the Development Committee got it right.
There you go. Member Kuduski.
Yeah, there, I mean, I think there was a horse on the property that was grandfathered in. Most of lots around there are two-plus acres and have horses. This one was even, if it had 40,000, it qualifies. It's 33,000 approximately. It was even larger, the lot, but because of the, I think it was the township roads coming through, they took some of the frontage as they put their infrastructure in, so the lot was bigger. It has gotten smaller because of that acquisition also. But I am supporting it. I voted for it.
Further discussion. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. I think a roll call would be in order. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Kuduski.
Yes.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
No.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
No.
Member Schworzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
And Member Kuduski.
Aye.
That's 14.
Okay. 14, aye, 3, nay.
There are 14 voting aye, 3 voting nay, and the resolution is adopted. Okay, thank you. Pays for horses. Very nice. Where are we? Member Chaplin? No, Member Tornatori, forgive me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of DCO 6822, ordinance zoning 2255, a zoning hearing officer's recommendation to approve a variation to allow six foot 100% closed privacy fence.
It's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Kuduski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy. And Member Selman.
Aye.
Thank you. Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next concludes my report.
On to the Order of Environmental, Member Rutledge.
Thank you, Chairman. Happy Election Day, everybody. I'm sure I will, I'm sure everybody concurs that we're very happy to get to this point and to get rid of the landscape clutter known as political signs. I just wanted to make everybody aware that Joy will be resending a flyer that was previously sent out for an election sign recycle event, and that'll be on November 18th from 3:00 to 5:00, and November 19th from 10:00 to 12:00, right here in the 421 parking lot where people can recycle the signs and stands. They do need to be separated into two separate dumpsters, but let's keep all of that out of the landfill, shall we?
Okay. On to the Order of Health and Human Services, Member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of HHS P304-22, recommendation for approval of contract purchase order to Home Depot USA to furnish and deliver housekeeping supplies and cleaning chemicals for the care center, November 8, 2022 through October 31, 2025, not to exceed 189,000.
It's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Kuduski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
And Member Pachowski.
Okay. Member Renahan.
I move approval of HHS P305-22, recommendation for approval of contract with WSP USA Design to provide professional architectural and engineering design services for modernization and upgrade of the care center, November 9, 2022 through December 31, 2026, not to exceed $1,806,300.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
Move approval of HHS P306-22, recommendation for approval of contract with White Construction Services to provide construction manager at risk guaranteed maximum price method of delivery for upgrades and modernization of the care center, November 9, 2022 through December 31, 2026, not to exceed $29,693,700.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
I move to combine items 12D, E, F, and G. These are all authorizations for overnight travel for weatherization departments.
All those in favor say aye. There's a second. All those in favor say aye. Pose nay. The items are combined. Please proceed.
I move approval of 12D for the weatherization coordinator supervisor to go to soft skills training in Springfield, December 7 and 8, 2022, $338. 12D, weatherization assessor to go to mandatory soft skills training in Springfield, November 16 and 17, 2022, $493. At 12D, weatherization assessor to go to mandatory soft skills training in Springfield, December 7 and 8, 2022, $554.23. And 12G, weatherization assessor to attend basic training and proficiency exam in Champagne, January 9 through the 13th, 2023, $1,495.05.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
We're moving to judicial public safety.
Oh, forgive me. You're so efficient. We move on to the next order of business, Judicial Public Safety, Member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of JPSR 42622, awarding resolution for approval in agreement with the sheriff and family guidance centers for costs of inmate medical services.
It's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy. Member Selman. Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Kuduski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
And Member Pachowski.
Thank you. Member Renahan.
I move approval of JPSP 29722, recommendation for approval of a contract purchase order to global public safety jail tracker for a jail management system for the sheriff, not to exceed $570,000.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
I move approval of JPSP 29822, recommendation for approval of contract purchase order to Strikers, Inc., for new ballistic and stab bus for the sheriff's deputies, December 1, 2022 through November 30, 2023, not to exceed $165,000.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
I move approval of JPSP 29922, contract purchase order to CDW Government for national IP technology solutions for the purchase of new audiovisual equipment for the Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management Operations Center, November 8, 2022 through November 7, 2023, of our total amount of $81,704.11.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Renahan, a fine report. On to the Order of Legislative, Member Desart.
Thank you. Election Day is a sacred time when citizens can make their voices heard regarding who will represent them in our representative form of government, so I'd just like to remind our constituents to go vote today if you haven't already, and I wish my board colleagues all the luck in the world. Thank you.
On to the Order of Public Works, Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of FMP 030122, recommendation for the approval of a contract issued to Home Depot USA doing businesses Home Depot Pro to furnish and deliver housekeeping supplies and cleaning chemicals as needed for the county campus for facilities management for the period of November 9, 2022 through October 31, 2025, for a total contract amount not to exceed $90,000, contract law pursuant to Intergovernmental Cooperation Act.
It's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Ozog.
Yes.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Kuduski.
Aye.
And Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of FMP 03022, recommendation for the approval of a contract to Beldas Supply to furnish and deliver restroom tissue and paper towels to the judicial office facility, JTK Administration Building and the jail on a monthly basis, as needed for the power plant, children's center, Office of Emergency Management, and the coroner's office for facilities managed for the period, December 1, 2022 through November 30, 2023, for a total contract amount not to exceed $131,061.70 per lowest responsible bid.
Is there a motion? Request for leave? Leave is granted. Thank you very much, Member Ozog. On to the Order of Stormwater, Member Jim Zay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Move to combine items A through F. These are all intergovernmental agreements and ARPA items.
It's been a motion and a second to combine items A through F. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMR 45422, intergovernmental agreement between the county of DuPage and the city of Warrenville for an amount of $343,500. Move on SMR 45522, intergovernmental agreement between the county of DuPage and the city of Wheaton for the amount of $500,000. Move on SMR 45622, recommendation of the intergovernmental agreement between DuPage County and Downers Grove Township Highway Department for an amount of $236,100. Move on SMR 45722, intergovernmental agreement between the county of DuPage and Milton Township Highway Department for an amount of $295,000. Move on SMR 45822, intergovernmental agreement between the county of DuPage and Bloomingdale Township for an amount of $126,224. And I move on SMR 45922, intergovernmental agreement between DuPage County and Bloomingdale Township for a proposed stormwater amount of $112,010. All these are ARPA items.
It's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Kuduski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
And Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMR 46022, acceptance and appropriation of the pre-disaster mitigation grant for FY '22 Illinois Emergency Management Agency, Department of Homeland Security, in amount of $1,237,614.
Leave is granted. Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on SMP 30322, contract issued to Azteca Systems for asset managed software in the amount of $209,380.
Leave is granted. Member Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on SMP 30722, approval of a contract issued to Earthworks Land Development for on-call construction services for stormwater management for the amount of $2222,744 per lowest responsible bid.
Leave is granted. Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMP 30922, agreement between DuPage County and V3 Companies for professional engineering services, the amount not to exceed $91,788.80.
Second, let's say a roll. Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMP 31022, agreement between the county of DuPage and SEMCOM for professional engineering services in the amount not to exceed $95,000.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMP 31122, intro a joint funding agreement between the county of DuPage, United States Department of Interior, USGS, Water Resources, in the amount of $367,000.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Who's my report?
Thank you. Fine report. On to the Order of Technology, Technology, Member Ashley Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for those who aren't on the committee, Anthony gave a really great update on some of our big projects for the year, so if you have some questions and want to go ask, review that, it'll be on YouTube later.
Thank you.
And of course, you're always welcome to join us at 7:30, but I understand that's not everyone's favorite time of day. First up is TEP 312-22, recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to integrated document technologies for our software maintenance imaging systems. This is from January 1, 2023 through January 31, 2024, for a total of $58,227.56, and this is sole source.
It's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Kuduski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
And Member Schworzy.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 313-22, a recommendation for the approval of contract purchase order to IBM for program product software licenses and support. This is December 1, 2022 through November 30, 2023, $111,171.72, sole source.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Selman, a fine report. On to the Order of Transportation, Member Don Pachowski.
I would move to approve DTR 0461-22, a resolution for an agreement between the county of DuPage and the Chicago Metro Agency for Planning, CMAP, for safe streets and roads for all, grant county cost $60,000.
It's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy. Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Kuduski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
And Member Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce.